Morning Rod.
Hey Jeff, how you doing?
Well, for my age and habits, alright. How about you?
That's the same. I'm sick of sitting here doing this.
We used to have a-
It feels like I haven't left the Zoom meeting from last night.
We used to have a military phrase, Semper Gumby.
Yeah, that's me. So, I'm relieved that the development envelope application went through. They approved it after some torturous deliberations about exactly what they could do. I was kinda like, the applicant is showing pretty clearly that they're not anywhere near the buffer, for want of a better term. It's not even mapped as an overlay. I mean, it's just kinda like a real stretch. I get the purpose of it, but I'm just like, guys, you know, what do you wanna do here?
Well, you know, as a citizen watching that, I had nothing to do with that. I mean, I would've picked on other things, if not that.
Right.
It's a large lot, and I mean, golly.
Well, that was another funny thing they wanted to talk about. Somebody else started getting into it about how steep the driveway was, and I had to remind them, like, you're just here to review the development envelope. This guy could have a 25% slope on the driveway and there's nothing you can do about it. Like, you're not here for that. You're just here to say, I don't think there's gonna be any visual impact. And I'm kinda like, the whole thing is kinda crazy. Which is not to say that it's not, Union Village is a lovely road, and yeah, somebody could come along and propose building a monstrosity right on the edge of the road, right?
In Norwich?
Yeah.
You're kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, I intended, just to be positive in my comment as a citizen, that was-
That's good, thank you. Yeah. And then Eric's went through. He was, you know, everyone was like, oh yeah, you know, fine. And the driveway didn't come up. Why didn't the driveway come up? Because we didn't show a picture of the grade.
Well, I talked to him yesterday, and he said, hey, how do these things go? And I said, just do a slight intro and stop talking.
Yeah, just stop talking. Yeah. This is the best advice. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good morning, how is everybody? Even though it's raining out. Soon to be followed by some snow, if we're lucky, is one person's opinion.
Good morning.
Hi Jeff.
Rod, there was a bell ringing. Does that mean someone's trying to- You're on mute, so I can't hear you.
I think I got him off. Yeah. Hello Melissa?
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Morning. Joe, can you hear me?
Yes, there I go, sorry.
That's okay, it's good.
As I mentioned, I have a little bit of a challenging Zoom setup.
So, we're still waiting for, we got the Jeffs, we got the Brian and Jackie. We don't know if Leah is gonna make it.
I didn't hear, one way or the other, at the end about Leah's attendance. So, this may be it, aside from the question of Ernie.
We need one more for a quorum, is that right?
We've got a quorum now.
Oh, okay. I don't know if I can-
Here's Leah and Ernie, okay?
Okay.
Alright, well, it looks like we're all here. Good morning, everyone, and thanks for joining us at this late date, but we needed to have this meeting. And so, let's go ahead and get going. The first thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion, or is there any discussion?
So moved.
Dragon.
Thank you. Our meeting objectives today is to discuss the possible response to allegations that the 2020 town plan is based on actions that violated the open meeting law made by Commissioner Chikatelli and Mr. Richards and Mr. Wilderbeam. And now, we will go into, is there any public comments?
Melissa, did you need to take a vote on the agenda, or are you okay?
Oh, sorry. All in favor? We got it first and a second by Jeff.
All in favor.
Any objections?
Okay, so I'm gonna record that at 7:00, okay?
Sounds right.
Good. Thank you for that. Okay, so, public comment? Stuart?
Yes, I'd just like, for the record, to record what the counsel for the Secretary of State said. It was in a letter that I wrote, that I think you have a copy of it.
We received that as correspondence. Is there anything that you needed to add to that correspondence? I think we've all read it, reviewed it.
Okay, you can confirm that you have the letter?
Yes.
Then there isn't anything that needs to be added to the letter?
Okay.
At this time?
Great. Thanks for that, Stuart. At this point, you know, we would like to enter into executive session, but there is one issue that we need to address first, and that is whether Ernie Chikatelli should go into executive session or recuse himself. And just as a bit of background for everyone else, I have had a conversation, Ernie and I had a conversation the other day where I did make that request of him, and he said that he would not recuse himself. Does any further discussion need to be had? Does anyone wanna weigh in on that? Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, I don't see any reason for Ernie to recuse himself, and it's his choice.
Okay. Anyone else?
So, can I just understand, Melissa, what's the argument for him to recuse himself?
Because he was part of the complaints against the planning commission.
So, just to be, the fact that he has a point of view on this issue is a reason for him to recuse himself?
Well, because he and others filed a complaint against the planning commission. So, it wasn't just a difference of opinion, it was an actual complaint. Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, I stated in writing and publicly, a very similar view that the commission, and I'm only one member of nine, that the commission has violated the law. I've said that for quite some time. I don't think I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
Well, Melissa, if I could-
I'm sorry, let me, Joe McClain is our town attorney. Sorry not to introduce you earlier, but yeah, if you could proceed, that'd be great.
Well, nice to meet everyone under these somewhat unusual circumstances, but I guess I wanna weigh in, because I am concerned about Ernie.
You're breaking up. We can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Joe. We can't hear you.
Joe, we can't hear you.
Joe.
We can't hear you, Joe. Is there any way for you to call in?
Or be done.
No, no.
Ernie, you're on twice. Could you turn one of yours off?
I-
Ernie, if you could maybe get off one of them, whichever one works, leave the other one there. Rod, you could probably expel one of them, so there's only one, Ernie. Ernie, try turning your volume on now. Unmute yourself.
How's that?
Try again. Joe, you're on mute. Joe?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I apologize. I'm not used to this Zoom setup. I began to comment in response to Melissa that I do have concerns, very strong concerns, about participating or providing attorney-client communications in conjunction with any portion of this meeting in which Ernie is participating. I do look at his situation as being distinguishable from the situation that Jeff described, in the sense that he did actually join as a signatory complaint of an open meeting law violation against the planning commission. And it's my understanding that the purpose of my involvement in this meeting is to provide the planning commission as a public body with my legal advice, and for us to review a document that is not otherwise subject to public disclosure under the public records act at this time. And I am concerned that if I were to provide comments or recommendations to the planning commission while Ernie was participating, that it could have the effect of waiving attorney-client privilege, and may ultimately negatively impact, or put it a strategic disadvantage, the town in any subsequent litigation, because certainly those parties who file open meeting law complaints against a public body have the right to pursue that complaint in the civil division of the Superior Court. And so, for that reason, I would not be inclined to provide substantive legal advice to the planning commission if he chooses to participate. I would ask respectfully, and certainly we've never met before, and I don't question his right to raise a complaint under the open meeting law, but I do challenge his ability, once he's done that, to then rejoin the planning commission and receive what would otherwise be confidential attorney-client communication. That's my position on the matter.
Jeff Goodrich?
Hang on, Melissa, Ernie has his hand up, like-
I'm sorry, it's all Jeff's. Ernie, go ahead.
You're on mute, Ernie.
Ernie?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I thought Melissa was on control of my being muted or not, because of the, haha. First of all, I'm not gonna recuse myself. It's as simple as that. I have the right to be here. I'm a member of the commission. Second of all, no one has threatened litigation. It's not in the letter. There is a complaint, because there are facts that have been laid out. That's not necessarily saying that there's going to be a lawsuit. No one has talked to me about a lawsuit, in any case. Thirdly, an attorney has publicly posted, a pretty diligent attorney who's actually been involved in, well, he was on the development review board for years, has basically said that, aside from going into executive session is not mandatory under these circumstances, basically, the public has a right to know what is going on here. That is the entire issue here, is how the public gets excluded in planning commission activity, through the fact that the open meeting laws get violated. Keeping that in mind, I think that I am not gonna recuse myself, and I think that the meeting should not go into executive session.
Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand, although I have not interacted with the folks who wrote whatever they wrote, I'm trying to understand the difference between me and Ernie in this context, because I have said, and I've put in writing, for an extensive period of time, my own personal view that the planning commission has not been keeping or comported with open meeting law. So, what's the difference between me and Ernie? I certainly don't intend to recuse.
Joe, do you want?
Well, as I said, I believe that the filing of a complaint, in whatever form, with the public body, particularly a complaint that provides detailed allegations of alleged open meeting law violations, gives rise to certain legal consequences under the open meeting law, and implicit among those legal consequences, or not implicit, explicit in the statute, is a potential to bring civil action if you're not satisfied with the response or any proposed cure. And so, you know, I think there is a distinction, and, you know, I think it is my professional obligation to safeguard the attorney-client privilege to the extent that I can. And so, well, I certainly really respect individuals' rights to make decisions for themselves. My decision is to not engage in substantive legal advice while a potential litigation opponent is sitting there. I mean, I think that citizens would understand, just putting aside the intricacies of the open meeting law, if you take off your planning commission hat and you put on your public citizen hat to make a complaint, that's fine, you have every right to do that, but you don't then get to put your planning commission hat back on for the purpose of listening to the confidential attorney-client advice about your own complaint. That's my position.
Jeff LaBelle?
Yeah, I really appreciate the explanation, and I am persuaded that, for the sole purpose of receiving legal advice, that it would make sense to have, to go in executive session and not have the formal filing of a written complaint, not have any of those individuals participate in that session, because I don't wanna run the risk of violating attorney-client privilege, which will then lead to the disclosure of whatever that confidential advice is. I do wanna make really clear that that session should be limited exclusively to receiving legal advice, and should not include any substantive discussion of the matter, to which, you know, I think at some point, we should make sure we have an opportunity to hear from, you know, the folks who have concerns about it, but we could do that in an open session.
Okay, thanks. Ernie, I think you're next.
Yeah, I wanna know who the client here is. Is it the town, or is it the people of the town?
I represent the town.
Okay, and who is the town?
The town is the town-
I don't mean the name of the town. What actual body in the town is being represented here?
Under the rules of professional conduct, when you represent a government entity, you represent the entity as a whole, and you represent its constituent parts. So, I have to be mindful of the town as a whole, which generally acts through its legislative body.
And the constituent parts too, correct? You just said.
And in appropriate circumstances, I represent its constituent parts.
And that includes the citizens.
The constituent parts of the town. The towns are, the people of the town are constituents. I do not represent the people of the town. I represent the government entity that is the town of Norwich.
Okay.
And so, there is a distinction. Obviously, if I represented the whole town, there would be no attorney-client privilege, Ernie, but you, as an attorney, should understand-
That's my argument here.
I have a client, and my client is the town, and it would be wholly improper for me to disclose attorney-client communications to third parties. You, I'm sure, understand that such a disclosure has the effect of potentially waiving attorney-client privilege, not just with respect to the specific matter discussed, but also with regard to related matters. There's Supreme Court case law on this, and so-
Where has the town with the idea there is gonna be litigation? Unless it's planning litigation. Because that letter does not indicate that there is litigation. I have not been informed of any litigation. No one discussed it with me. I wouldn't have signed that letter if it had threatened litigation. It asked for, it had questions, because that's sometimes how you have to, instead of ramming your opinion down someone's throat, you ask questions instead that have obvious answers. That's how you sometimes elicit facts, correct, even in litigation?
There are any number of ways that you could potentially get information, but when you sign off on a complaint against the body in which you sit, I believe that you give up your right to then receive information from that body's attorney that would otherwise be confidential. I just told you that the statute expressly contemplates the potential for litigation and other potential consequences for the town.
The town is planning litigation, not the people who wrote the letter.
We hear maybe from some other people too. I think Jackie had her hand up. I know Jeff Goodrich had her hand up.
Jackie, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, our town is now spending valuable resources on Joe, and I appreciate his advice, and I think we need to take his advice. I'm sorry that it has come to this. I think it's unnecessary, the whole matter, but this is where we are. Actions have consequences, and this is one of the consequences. We're in a meeting, paying for a lawyer, by the town, and I think we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our town to take his advice.
And Jeff Goodrich, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, so I'm still unclear. So, is the distinction, because I have communicated as a planning commission member, and in writing as a planning commission member, that Joe doesn't think I need to recuse myself? I've been saying this as one member of the commission, as commission members know, for a couple of years or more.
Jeff, can I answer that? If I'm understanding correctly, the filing of that letter is being considered as an, from an administrative point of view, as the filing of a formal complaint? And to the extent that it is a formal complaint, there are certain, it triggers a legal process that provides us with a certain amount of time to respond, and a requirement to respond, which is why we're having this expedited meeting. I don't think anything that you did in the past triggered that administrative process, or at least was not considered to trigger it. I'm not providing that as legal advice, that's just my general understanding of the posture, but I'll defer to the attorney as to whether that's a correct interpretation of where we are. Well, I think that that is a fair interpretation. You know, the statute, legal rights and responsibilities under the statute arise as a result of a written notice of alleged violation. And so, to put it in context of civil litigation, you can say that your rights have been violated 1,000 times over, and that may not have any legal consequence, but if you file a written complaint in the civil division, well, that does have a legal consequence. well, that does have a legal consequence and it gives rise to legal obligations on the part of other parties. And so that's how I'm looking at this. And I think it's a reasonable way to look at it under the circumstances.
Okay. Does anyone else have any more comment? I mean, I think, Ernie, you've made it clear that you're not going to recuse yourself.
Yes.
So at this point, should we, can, Stuart?
Yeah, Stuart Richards, 82 Elm Street. So I think I want to agree with both Ernie and with Jeff with respect to their positions. I don't see much difference between, between the two Planning Commission members. And I also want to strongly object to the fact that you're going to go, appear to be going into executive session and excluding the public. Whatever your decisions happen to be are going to be revealed after, after your executive session, if in fact you hold it. Well, I don't see what the harm is in, in actually understanding the reasoning that you might be using to get to whatever you're going to do. You're going to come out of the meeting, you're going to tell us, or you're going to tell the public, which has been excluded, that, that you're going to do X, Y, and Z, or not do X, Y, and Z. But there's going to be a result from your exec, and I just, I don't understand why, you know, you're kind of cloaking that on the attorney-client privilege and it doesn't make any sense to me. And I don't think it would make much sense to the public either. I'm only speaking as one, one person in the public.
Okay.
But I just, I fail to see the logic.
I appreciate your comment. I think at this time, we do have a specific time limit of till 9:30 and I think we need to move this along if everyone's comfortable. So I'd like to make a motion at this time and to move into executive session with Town Council and the Town Planner. And we need to make a specific finding that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public, the public body or person involved at a substantial disadvantage. We are going to be discussing confidential attorney-client communication made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body. And additionally, records that we may review are exempt from access to, from public access to, according to the Public Records Provision of Section 316 of this title. Provided however, that discussion of the exempt record should not, itself permit an extension of the executive session to the general subject to which the record pertains. Can I get, is there a second to move into the executive session at this time?
Second it.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion is passed, so at this time, we will enter into.
Just before you do that, can I, can I, so it was 5-2, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can I, can I ask that the actual people who are voting for and against this motion be recorded in the minutes?
Can we do a roll call? Those, Jeff LaBelle, how do you vote?
I vote for the motion to move into executive session.
Jackie Allen, how do you vote?
You're on, you, Jackie.
I vote yes.
Brian Loeb?
Yes.
Leo Romano?
Yes.
Ernie Cicatelli?
No.
Jeff Goodrich?
No.
And Melissa Horowitz, yes.
So I, I, I do hope that we will, after we receive our attorney-client privilege, you know, whether today or another time, provide an opportunity for the, any individuals who are not included within that session, the opportunity to state their views and engage in a discussion.
No official action can be taken in executive session, so in order to take any action, we'll have to move back into the general session.
Okay.
Rod, can you work your magic with the technology?
I think we just explained that what we're going to do is ask Mr. Richards to leave the meeting at this point. Is that right?
Well, I think he can stay in this meeting if he wants to wait until we report back. But Rod actually can pull us into another room so that we can go into an executive session. I hope that, that's how this like works on it, so I hope we can do that.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can do that.
I'd just like to be able to come back when you return from your executive session, if that's doable with the technology that we've got.
I hope so.
Do you create a breakout room? Is that what you do?
I'm attempting to create a, create a breakout room. And I'm going to do it manually.
Okay. If you need help, let me know. You could, I do this all the time.
I, I, I might, I might need some help with this, but.
So you'll just need to make me the host. So Melissa, just to be clear, at this point, the executive session will include Ernie. Is that right or will not? I mean, what's the? We didn't talk, talk about that in the motion.
Rod or Joe?
So then issue a, make a separate motion about, about, you know?
We don't have that right.
Okay, so I, I allowed you to host Jeff LaBelle. So do you see that?
Yeah.
Could we handle one thing at a time for just a moment? And I'm not privy to which order, but either have the discussion that was brought up or move into the Zoom meeting. I think the juggling is causing an issue.
You'll need to make me the, the host, which you have not yet done, Rod. Just right-click on me and the participant window and then click on make host.
Yeah, okay, got it. Yep. There you go.
Okay, and then just to be clear, who should be in the executive session, everyone but Mr. Richards?
Correct.
Okay, let me just go ahead and, and do that. Okay, just give me one second here. Oh, hold on, I need to create two rooms, one second. We want two rooms. Sign manually. Put in one room, Mr. Loeb, Mr. Cicatelli, Jackie, Jeff, Joseph, Leah, Melissa, and the town of Norwich. And in the second room, we will put Mr. Richards. So just to be clear, Stuart, I don't know, I think you're listening, that we're going to put you in, everyone's going to be in a room. You could either stay in the main room or you could go into the breakout room. But you will not be in the executive session room. So when we, when we end executive session, I will close the breakout rooms and then you will, we'll all rejoin the main meeting. I'm going to do that now.
I'll, I'll just leave the.
Leave it on, leave it on.
I'll just leave it on and when you come back to me, I'll be, I'll be included again.
Yeah, so if everyone could join the breakout room, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not joining.
Yeah, that's fine. You can just stay where you are or you could join room two, either one. It's good, you're going to be by yourself, okay? I'm going to now join the, the executive session. Well, we'll resume in a bit.
Bye-bye.
So, uh, at this point, uh, is it appropriate, Melissa, for me to make a motion?
I would appreciate that. Thanks.
So I, I, I move that the planning commission delegate to the, to Melissa Horowitz as the chair of the planning commission. The, uh, discretion to determine how to respond, um, to the complaint in light of pertinent legal advice from town council.
Um. Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, all opposed?
Nay.
And Leah, did you cast a vote?
No, I, I'm not trying to add pressure to this. I just. I, I, I don't know what the response will be and I'm, because this is entering a legal matter. I don't, I'm, I don't know if I should just abstain or say, yes, I want this to move forward, but I don't know what your response is going to be.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, I don't know if there was an appropriate, I, I. This is an unusual situation and if I think I can just abstain.
Rod, you got that?
Yeah. So I have, I have the voters four, two, one.
Yeah.
Okay. And we want to point out, I want to point out that it's time to wind up the meeting.
Okay. So I appreciate that. We'll move forward and you all will be aware of what happens next. So thanks very much for everyone taking the time to meet and to work on this issue.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
A motion to adjourn? Cool.
Okay.
I'm going to end the meeting now. Thank you.
Bye bye.